All right, welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. Tonight's meeting on February 4th, 2020. Ma'am, may I have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right, if everybody can please stand. We're going to have an invocation inspiration by Mr. Eric Ball from New Beginnings Church. Thank you for coming, sir. And if Ms. Sandy Drown would lead us in the pledge immediately after, I'd appreciate that.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your provision for each of us. I thank you for each of these people who care enough about their community to come and to work towards the best for our community. I pray, Father, that as this meeting goes on, that all would be done out of a heart of compassion for this community, a heart of just service. Lord, we thank you for this day. We ask for wisdom for decisions that need to be made. And just, Father, may we bring you honor and glory. I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, thank you both, Sandy, Mr. Ball. I appreciate your time doing that. This time, we'll go ahead and have the city attorneys report on closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, there's no reportable action taken in closed session. However, closed session has not been concluded and will continue after the regular session has been resolved this evening.
Thank you very much. And do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I request that we pull Item 5A, Item 12, and Item 16B from the agenda tonight. 5A, Item 12, and Item 16B.
And 16B, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I also have a clarification for one of the consent calendar items. That would be Consent Calendar Item Number 7, Executive Team Service Contracts. As the City Council knows, but there are other people here, City Manager has certain authority with regards to those contracts, including doing car uniform, mutual aid issues, sick vacation based upon service, that he will be adding in as appropriate for the Fire Chief and for the Chief of Police based upon the type of service that they're rendering. I just wanted to make sure the council was aware of that before they approved the agreement.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Second. That being said, we'll go on to Number 1 with a Teen Dating and Violence Awareness and Prevention Month proclamation. Marsha Crowe-Taylor, a familiar sight. And they tell me that our wireless microphone walked away, so I'm going to bend this one backwards and lean over and talk to that. So I'll meet you up front, and the rest of us, if you'd care to join me, that'd be fine, too.
Thank you.
And I got to do this so that the videotape recorded will get me here. So Teen Dating and Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. One of the three, one of, excuse me, one in three adolescent girls in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds victimization rates for other types of violence affecting youth. High school students who experience physical violence in a dating relationship are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at greater risk of suicide, and are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships, engage in risky sexual behavior, unhealthy dieting behaviors, and experience disruption of normal development of self-esteem and body image. Only 33% of teens who are in an abusive relationship ever tell anyone about the abuse, and 81% of parents surveyed either believe teen dating violence is not an issue or admit they do not know if it is one. The establishment of Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month will benefit young people, their families, schools, and communities to raise community awareness and to provide training for teachers, counselors, and school staff so that they may recognize when youth are exhibiting signs of dating violence. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council proclaim that February 2020 is Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, and urge all agencies and businesses to work toward ending teen dating violence. Of course, dated today. Kind of feel weird clapping about that, but we're not going to do that. So would you care to say anything?
I would.
Okay.
Do I need the mic?
Well, for the perpetuity, it'd be a good idea to maybe speak in that direction.
Lean in. It does sound like this is a really terrible thing that's going on in our community, and it is, because it is one in three teens. And we are seeing an increase of it here at CASA. Our callers are becoming younger and younger. When we go out to the schools, what we're finding is that this is something that they speak openly about. And many times, kids are not even seeing it as an issue. It is the regular way that kids date now. And that says a lot. It says an awful lot. But the really good news is, is that when we're in those classrooms, when we're in those schools, and when we're talking to the kids, they get really excited about doing something and becoming proactive. So for me, it's really good because I began to see that kids, just like the new generation that we've seen year, I mean, generation after generation, they're coming up, but they're tackling the problem. And for those kids who aren't involved in it, they're willing to call it out to those who are. And that says a lot about our community because we're not hiding our heads in the sand. So as bad as it is, as much as we don't want to clap because we have to have a Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, the good news is, is our kids are willing to finally talk about it. Maybe they won't talk about it to their parents, but they're talking about it to one another. And as we're in the schools and we're teaching them, they become good allies to that other teen that's in these dating violence relationships. So we're seeing a turnaround. The numbers are coming in, but that's a good thing because they're not keeping quiet as much anymore. And we receive more and more calls from young teenagers, generally from age 15 to about 17, who are saying, "I have a friend who and what do I do?" And that's pretty amazing. So we may not want to clap because we have to have the month, but we really need to applaud our kids who are saying, "You know what? We really need to do something about that." It's one more really good indication of the new generation that's coming up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you very much, girl. Orange is the color of teen dating violence awareness. We have orange ribbon, saving to the council people. If you would like an orange ribbon to wear all month long, so that when people ask you and tell us about, contact us at CASA, and we will bring them to you. So, orange is the color, we're going to have a Christmas ribbon sent out to the South End her school because they take it on every year. Watch the newspaper because you'll get an idea of what kids are doing.
Marsha, do you have a date yet for that bonding chance?
January 12.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha.
Bless you.
And now we are welcoming Ms. Sandy Drown from the Downtown DBA, who has a presentation about the Christmas Stroll.
Watch it, councilman. It's the screenshot. Thank you. Thank you. I try. Push my shoulders back. Thank you, Mayor Harris and Councilwoman for allowing me to present today. My name is Sandy Drown, and I am the President of the Yuba City Downtown Business Association. So our presentation today, I just wanted to show you the beautiful crane that we have as our logo, Pluma Street Shopping District. Isn't that pretty? And then the Yuba City Downtown Association's mission, to preserve, promote, encourage aspiring businesses, and provide safe, clean center for culture and community life for residents and visitors alike. And then our vision statement that we just came up with this last year, it got passed, was to be known as the premier shopping, dining, entertainment destination of the region. So we are striving for that next couple of years. So the Christmas Stroll was, we have two signature events that we do, which is led by our event chair, which is Teresa Schmidt with Twin Cities Flooring. So she helps lead that. And our Christmas chair, because it takes a lot of people to kind of organize, is Olivia Huskin. She's in the room as well. So just wanted to make sure that we thank Teresa and Olivia for their hard work for the Christmas Stroll. And then you'll see the rest of our committee, and those where we're meeting every two weeks. So you can tell that it is a small group, but we got a lot done. And then also, I put on there is Public Works and Parks and Recs because they help us a lot with getting the street signage up, the tree lighting. And so we just wanted to appreciate Brad and Diana for all their hard work and allowing us to have their team help us. It's our logo for the Christmas Stroll that we came up with a couple of years ago. You can see the crane's right there. Hopefully, everyone's enjoying that. And we've been using this one for the last couple of years. Our poster, which has been fun. And then here is our agenda that we actually put online as well, but you'll see some of the regular activities that we have. Of course, we have Manny Claws at the North Pole, which was a lot of fun. Everyone enjoys those, and those are all complimentary pictures, but you'll kind of take a look over at, there's a ton of activity that this little small committee does and works hard for. Some of the new items that we did add this last year was, we added the Rock Wall, which was fun and exciting. It kind of hit a different demographic this year. We also had, on our main stage, we did Christmas karaoke. We had a 5-3-0 dating game, which was a lot of fun, a lot of entertainment, and a lot of people enjoyed watching that as well. I'm just looking over my notes to make sure I didn't forget anything else. And then, of course, our tree lighting, which starts at 6:00 and which we partner with the city on with that, and also, I think, the Sutter County Supervisors as well. And then we had the little stroll that walked down. So hopefully, everybody enjoyed that. We did add some characters as well. We hired a company from Sacramento to do characters, and on this next couple of slides, you'll see those. Elf on the Shelf is one thing that we added. Did we have those, Crystal? Last year. And I forgot to always thank you for all that you do because without you, the rest of us volunteers would not be as organized. So thank you. So Crystal works with all the schools, and we had five schools, it's first and second grade, and we had 24 elves out on Pluma Street. We start a week prior with about five of them out in the different businesses. And then during the stroll, they go out, and we had great prizes. First prize was diamond earring, second was a diamond necklace, and then the third was, oh, no, actually, I'm sorry, that's backwards. First, or, yeah, first was diamond ring, second was a diamond necklace, and then the third was diamond earring. So great prizes there. We had 24 out there, and we had, did only 24 get?
22.
22 were found, and that was the winner of the diamond ring. But a lot of fun, a lot of great activity. A lot of the stores love it because it forces people to come in. And the schools, actually, that do the elves also like to participate and send their kids down. So it's been a lot of fun, and that's been a great movement that we've done, and marketing campaign that we did that has been successful for us. So here's just a couple of the pictures. We had, to your right, we have a couple of our characters. Frozen 2 came out, so we thought those would be great characters. And we had those for about three hours, strolling up and down Pluma Street. It was pretty exciting. We added some picture opportunities. We had somebody make those, a local artist make those, and so people could do pop-outs. We also had Jack Skellington and the Grinch on our train, our express train. And then the left picture is the 5-3-0 couple, she picked the boy to go on a dinner date. And so that was kind of a, we did a live stream of that and the dinner, just for a little bit more of added excitement. So that was about all that we had for the Stroll. It was a great event. We also had, oh, I forgot. Oh, who's this? Oh. Can you see this picture? We had our Vice Mayor, Mark Boomgarden, that took a picture with Grinch. That was pretty cool. And then, yeah, we had, we wanted to thank our sponsors, the City of Yuba City, of course, Sutter County, Calusa Casino Resort. Do you guys want to see that again? Oh, I can't go back. Hello. Right. No, okay. Maybe you should take the remote away from me. I just fishbun. All right. Thank you. Okay, so we should probably stay on this one?
Why?
I don't know. It's such a cute picture. That was another character that we had, and he did a really great job. And then, as everyone noticed, the big thing that we did, oh, I'm sorry, let me finish thanking our sponsors. It was City of Yuba City, of course, Sutter County, Calusa Casino Resort, Sun Suite Growers, and Yuba Water Agency, which were our big sponsors for this event. And without them, we could not have put on this kind of event. Also, we had the trees. I don't know if you guys all noticed the trees lit? And so that was a big expense. It was a big project. Brad helped us a lot with getting the vendor and with kind of how we were going to do this on the trees. We wanted to get it before the Christmas Stroll started, so there was a lot of movement. I think we aggressively started in October, but we found a vendor that did it, and so hopefully, everybody enjoyed that. The DBA is looking to keep that year-round. I know for this first launch, he didn't even have the appropriate light, so I think we're kind of working on that, solar lights, that kind of stuff. But hopefully, people are enjoying that. And he said, "We'd be the last to be taken down." So as you come down Pluma Street, hopefully, people are enjoying that as well as with, I think it adds some safety to Pluma Street as well. But that's what we've been doing at the DBA for the Christmas Stroll. Any questions?
Through the mayor. Really?
She gave me this this time.
This was a serious question.
Who's that green guy standing next to the Grinch?
Which one's the green?
I know. I know, right?
Okay. I received, I've received quite a few compliments about the lights and the desire to keep them up year-round. So let's talk. I think that's something that, you know, I think there's some safety reasons to have those up, and some deterrent reasons to have them up besides the fact that that really looks cool.
Thank you. We've received that as well.
Yeah, through the mayor. Sandy, you guys do an amazing job. My apologies again for not being able to be there.
We understand.
Do we have next year's date by chance? Because it was so close to my anniversary, I was out of town.
It is always the second Saturday in December. And the reason why is we don't want to compete with the Marysville Parade.
Yeah.
So.
It was compressed this year, and that's how everything ran together. But excellent job. Sorry I couldn't be there. I'm amazed you got the Vice Mayor to wear a Santa hat. He's never going to live this one down. But absolutely, kudos. Pluma Street looks incredible. Anything that I can do, not only as a council member, but as a business owner here in this community, to help, let's keep it going. Let's finish the work that you guys have started. It's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sandy.
Through the mayor?
Oh.
I, I, I'm sorry. Did I catch you off, sir?
Yeah, she just wait until I'm done, then you go. But go ahead.
That was all planned.
I know.
I think the Stroll is such a family-oriented, amazing afternoon and evening event. The two years that I've been really part of this as a council member, it just seems like each year, it just, from the last two years, it's just gotten so much better. And you see kids and families running around from everywhere. And it was exciting with our fire truck, you know, engines and out there, and the kids, I could overhear little kids talking about, "Oh, I want to be a fireman. Oh, I want to be a policeman." You know, "Oh, there's the, you know, there's Santa Claus," or, "Ooh, there's the Vice Mayor." I don't know which one he is. But, you know, it was, it's really an amazing. And so for all the work that all of you do along with the city staff, but really, your leadership, all of you women leaders, I commend you for the amazing work that you're doing for our entire community and just increasing the quality of this life that we all share together. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Sandy, for everything you do, and all your staff, and we're ready for next year for another wonderful time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did forget to thank the most important, though, because they help us with the safety, is one is the Yuba City Police Department. Thank you so much. Sergeant Slate is such a pleasure to work with. And then, of course, our Fire Marshal, Jesse. You helped me a lot. Thank you, especially with the vendors that we have. Center Street has grown quite a bit with the food trucks, and Jesse has really educated me a lot on what to look for, and then just kind of advice and helping us to make sure that we provide a safe environment. And then the last thing, I just wanted to make sure before, excuse myself, is Summer Stroll is June 20. It is going to be from 3:00 to 9:00, so please mark your calendars for that. We've got a lot of great stuff, and so, and I look forward to working with the council on any ideas that you guys want to help us with on that as well. Do you like me to take that off?
I'm just wondering what's in store for the Summer Stroll.
More pictures of our Vice Mayor.
That's all good. Well, thank you very much, Sandy. It was a wonderful event, always is. Really good turnout, I noticed this year especially. So keep up the good work there. And I also, you know, I know we've talked already, but I share Vice Mayor's comments and his about the year-round lighting. There's a lot of good possibilities there. So, yeah, let's talk more about trying to make that happen. That'd be wonderful. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate it. All right, appearance of interested citizens. We have one speaker card. Phil, come on up whenever you're, or wherever you are. Anybody else would like to come up? You're welcome and encouraged to participate in the meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. And comments on controversial items may be limited in large groups, or encouraged to select representatives to express opinions of the group. For items on the agenda, let's see, we'll take during the council's consideration of each agenda item at the time. If you wish to speak on any item appearing on the agenda, please note the number of the agenda item which you're about to wish to speak. Not on the agenda, public comments on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time, as I said. We have one speaker card. Anybody else who would like to say anything about something not on the agenda, please feel free. Otherwise, Phil, go for it.
Phil Traynor, Yuba City. I hadn't anticipated being called up so soon. I want to commend the Appeal Democrat for getting an article in the newspaper today regarding the Calpers. Without it, I wouldn't have known that you were going to have a discussion on the Calpers tonight. But reading your agenda, the mayor will be asking for a resolution to sign a letter regarding Calpers, and I would like him to consider the following. When he writes the letter, don't say that Yuba City owes Calpers money. According to what the Appeal Democrats, it said that, the Appeal Democrat said, "The unfunded liability is a loan, and it's not a loan." City's never signed a note with Calpers for something near $80 million. So I would suggest you find some of the words to put in there if and when you make up this The mayor also, according to what the Appeal Democrat said, the mayor said that the unfunded liability is like a house mortgage. That's not right. You do pay off a house mortgage eventually. We will never pay off the unfunded liability. This is Traynor speaking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so anybody else care to speak? All right, we'll move on to Consent Calendar. All matters listed on a consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. We are pulling Number 5, as previously stated.
5A.
Sorry. 5A, which is not delineated on my copy. What is 5A?
........................
All right, so 5A, so we will be voting on, do I need a motion on items Number 4, 5B, 6, and 7? And may I have a request, too, when we prefer, when we prepare the mayor's agenda, that we indicate the complete items? I don't have a B on mine.
Okay.
All right, we just need a motion on 4, 5B, 6, and 7.
Through the mayor. Move that we approve consent items 4, 5B, 6, and 7.
Second.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Do you want to offer an opportunity to the public to speak on the consent calendar?
Sure. That's a good idea.
Now that we have a motion, yeah.
Member from the public care to comment? All right, here and now, we have a first and a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There we go. Move on to Number 8. Yuba City Firefighters Local 3793 Memorandum of Understanding. Welcome, Natalie.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, City Council Members. I am here to present the Local 3793 Memorandum of Understanding for approval. The last Local 3793 MOU expired June 30, 2019. The city and Local 3793 have met approximately eight times to negotiate this new MOU. Some items that are included in the Memorandum of Understanding that were negotiated over those eight meetings were 1% salary increase, a one-time non-perceivable stipend, and it also incorporates the SAFER grant, our limited-term employees, into the Local 3793 bargaining unit. This is approximately nine members that would go into the current 49 budgeted positions in Local 3793. It also allows the SAFER grant limited-term employees to move to, from a fire recruit position into the firefighter 1 classification if that particular employee meets minimum qualifications. It also allows these employees to apply for internal recruitments after three months, which is a change from six months, and it also removes the living restrictions that have been in their job descriptions. There is a financial impact to this Memorandum of Understanding that you can see outlined in this table. Before I conclude, I would like to thank City Council and Local 3793 for coming to, you know, coming to terms for this MOU. I would also like to particularly thank the Local 3793 negotiating team. They showed a lot of poise and professionalism at the bargaining table. So at this time, I will take any questions that City Council may have.
All right.
Through the mayor?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a one-year Memorandum of Understanding with Yuba City Firefighters Local 3793. And Item B, approve a supplemental appropriation of $189,200 to the fiscal year 1920 adopted budget.
I want a second, and we have to open it to the public first.
Any member of the public care to comment on this item? All right, so we have a first, and Dave seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Number 9, post-employment lobbying ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Through our process of working with the executive managers, employment agreements, the council had asked to bring an ordinance that would apply to department heads regarding post-employment lobbying. Currently, under state law, city managers and all elected officials are already required to follow the post-employment lobbying rules of the state, also known as the Revolving Door Act. This would, this local ordinance that would have to be approved by the City Council would extend that, essentially the same law, to our executive managers, which are our department heads, Fire Chief, Police Chief, Public Works Director, Development Services Director, Human Resources Director, and Community Services Director. So this would be the first reading and consideration of this ordinance, which essentially requires... which essentially requires that there is a waiting period of one year before an employee who separated from the city could return to the city council, the city government, and lobby on behalf of a third-party client. Essentially, that is what this is. So if an employee separated for any reason from the city, retired, went to another job, whatever, they would have to wait one year before they could lobby the city council on behalf of a client or a corporation or someone who has business in front of the city. This, this, as I've said, this does already apply to all city managers in the state and all elected officials. So this would simply extend to department heads. There are few cities in the state, quite a few larger cities in the state that already have an ordinance like this that applies to their department heads. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and that concludes my report.
Anybody have any questions? I'm going to. Do you guys have anything? Nothing? Any member of the public care to comment? Nothing? All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Through the mayor?
Through the mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to, staff's recommendation of the post-employment lobbying ordinance, introduce ordinance adding section 2-511 to chapter 5, Personal Administration of the Title II Administration of the Uba City Municipal Code relating to post-employment lobbying and waive the first reading.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Passes. We'll go on to number 10, Street Banner Policy Program. Welcome, George.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is George Barlow. I'm an analyst here at the city manager's office. Thank you for allowing me to present to you the Street Banner Program and staff recommendation, recommendation to adopt a resolution approving the Street Banner Policy and Program Guidelines. The purpose is to provide a venue for additional advertising space to promote community-based events cosponsored, supported, or endorsed by the city. A little background, for many years banners have been exhibited on Uba City light poles. In the last couple of years, the interest in street banner exhibiting has increased and we expect it to increase more with the completion of the Fifth Street Bridge and Bridge Street Corridor. In recent months, staff researched other cities' programs and proposes implementation of a banner policy and program guidelines for Uba City to ensure a fair and cooperative process and to avoid conflicts and competing for prime display space. So across our city, we have 48 Cobra Head light poles with existing banners on them. Likewise, we have 32 Victorian light poles with either hardware or banners existing on them. As indicated in the Street Banner, in the Street Banner Policy and Program Guidelines, we have seven banner locations. One of our banner locations, the main banner location, is our Bridge Street Banner area, where we have 26 banners spanning from Cooper Avenue to Pluma Street. Other banner areas, Staber Lane, north of Butte House to Sharon Drive, and also Gray Avenue from Butte House to Queens. Just south of us, we have North Walton, and that would be our Sun Suite banner area. And then just south of that and west of Walton, we have our Franklin Avenue banner area. And in the south area, we have South Walton. That would be south of Lincoln is another banner area. And then we have Garden Highway from Lincoln to Bog Road. Applicants will be able to download the vertical banner application through our website, read the Street Banner Policy and Program Guidelines, return their completed banner application at City Hall or via email. Once the application is approved, the applicant will pay the banner installation fee of $35 per banner. The city or designated installer will install the banners. And staff recommends, recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the Street Banner Policy and Program Guidelines. Our physical impact, there will be no impact to the general fund. All costs associated with the Street Banner Program will be funded by the banner installation charges. And with that, do I have any questions from council?
Through the mayor. Thank you, Mr. Barlow. This was something that this council was interested in back in June. It's great to see it come forward. I know there's going to be plenty of interest in the program and I appreciate your efforts in finalizing the application and the process. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Through the mayor. Questions concerning the, how, as a city, we can use them ourselves? Because if you go back to one of your very first slides, you had, the one that strikes home with me the most was honoring a veteran. I was a recipient, I believe, of a Purple Heart, there you go, Army Sergeant, Bronze Star, Purple Heart. Obviously, if we wanted to do something, I see that throughout the nation to where they will honor their hometown heroes, military, fire, police, at different times. Would, what you're proposing, would the city have the availability to basically, they're our property, we're going to run this campaign ourselves at this time? And kind of have blackout dates if we chose to do that?
Yes, absolutely, to answer your question. As we do currently with our YC 311 banners, the course, our, our advertisement for our YC 311 app, so the same would apply to those type of banners. I have been in discussions with veterans organizations to try to supply names and, and various individuals to actually put those type of banners up.
Kudos. I appreciate it. I want to see a lot more of them because they really enhance the city. So.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody from the public care to comment on it? All right. We have, it's motion time. If anybody would care to do it?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Like big staff's recommendation of street ban, street banner policy and program to adopt a resolution approving the Street Banner Policy and Program Guidelines.
Second.
All right, first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None. Thank you, George. Good job. Welcome Diana, SB 1383 compliance.
Good evening, Mayor and council. In September 2016, SB 1383 established statewide methane emissions reduction targets in an effort to reduce emissions of short-lived climate pollutants, including statewide goals to reduce the disposal of organic waste and recover edible food for human consumption. Over the past few months, staff has been working with Rob Hilton, president of HFNH Consultants, and his team to assess, to assess the city's readiness to comply with SB 1383. Mr. Hilton is here tonight to discuss their findings. No action is required of council tonight. This is an informational item only. And with that, I'd like to introduce Rob Hilton.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of the public. Thanks for having me here tonight. My name's Rob Hilton. I'm with HFNH Consultants. And we specialize in working with local governments on solid waste-related issues. So I'm here tonight to talk to you a little bit about what SB 1383 has in store for you over the next few years, understand where the city is against the compliance requirements that the state has set, and talk about some of the background and context for how you'll move forward. So as Diana mentioned, the state adopted, the legislature passed this law in 2016 and it affects a number of industries from ag and dairy through to solid waste, producers of super potent greenhouse gases that the state is interested in reducing. The state has spent the last two years producing this 194 pages of regulatory text that establishes minimum program standards for every jurisdiction in the state to regulate every generator of organic waste. That means food, yard trimmings, paper, cardboard, biosolids. They've cast a fairly wide net. And the interest is in reducing the amount of methane produced at landfills. When organic waste decomposes in a landfill, in an anaerobic environment, it generates methane. We capture some of that, but not all of it. So their target by January 1 of this year was to achieve a 50% reduction in organics disposal. That didn't happen. This is the first time I'm getting to say that. January 1 of 2022, all of these minimum program standards that the state has in the draft regulations become effective and local agencies are expected to have implemented programs and those things. And in January of 2022, the state can enforce against local agencies for failure to comply. The penalty is up to $10,000 per day for a jurisdiction failing to implement all of these programs. By January 1 of 2024, they're proposing a fairly radical shift in how we interface with the public around solid waste services. Specifically, they're going to look for local agencies to enforce with fines for people that don't properly separate recyclable materials and organic materials from the trash. So this is a big shift in how we deal with this stuff and we're trying to get out in front of it and bring some awareness early because there are going to be a number of changes that are required to get to that place in 2024. All of that is in service of trying to get to a 75% reduction, which may happen if they implement those things, in organics disposal by 2025. In addition, they want to take some of that food that's being wasted and recover it where it's safe, where it's appropriate, for human consumption to deal with hunger issues that we have in the state. So we went through your franchise agreement with Recology and Recology is here in the room today, your ordinances, your policies here at the city, to understand where are you in complying with those regulations. And they cover these sort of five major topic areas. So I'm quickly going to go through where you are. There's details in your packet. On the collection and processing requirements, basically what you collect from customers, where it goes, how it gets handled, you're in fairly good shape on. That's the piece that you're the most close to compliance for. We'll talk about some of the specifics in a second, but generally for your residential generators, you're in good shape. There are some additions that you'll need to do for some commercial and multifamily generators and program expansion for those folks. Your materials are going to good processing facilities that are taking care of them in the ways that they should, so that piece is pretty well taken care of for you. There are some changes that the processing facilities will have to deal with related to these regulations that will affect their operations, but you're in pretty good shape in terms of your programs. The next pieces, you have a little bit more distance to cover on, on getting to compliance. So for monitoring and enforcement, they want you to monitor the activity of all of the generators of organic waste in your community. They want you to know if they have a recycling container, have an organics container, whether they're contaminating those containers. And you're expected to have protocols for monitoring that. There are also significant reporting requirements. All of the monitoring that you do, the state is going to want reported to them on an annual basis. In terms of enforcement, you'll have to have ordinances that allow you to enforce around the things that they're looking for enforcement on, and there's a fairly healthy list, against generators who either don't participate, don't participate correctly, or flagrantly violate the laws. You're expected to establish edible food recovery programs. In this area, you do have some good feeding organizations and some networks around that. The city will need to take an enhanced role around that, or your regional partners will, to promote those things, to create networks that connect those that have edible food to donate with those that are feeding people. You'll need to adopt a number of ordinances. Could be all in, at once, but it will probably affect four or five different sections of your municipal code, mandating organic separation, mandating food recovery, and permitting your enforcement of those things. In addition, you need to be keeping up with construction and demolition waste. And the state is looking for you to help close the loop on the recycled materials that are going to go out there by enforcing pieces of the model water-efficient landscaping ordinance that the state has. And then lastly, as part of that closing the loop, the state has asked local governments to pick up the tab on some portion of the organic material that will be recycled into compost or mulch or renewable natural gas. And each city in the state has a population-based allocation of how much of that stuff you'll need to purchase. In addition, they're looking for you to purchase more recycled content paper and they're looking for you to report to them about how much you are or aren't purchasing. So as I mentioned earlier, the good news is for your residential system, you're in pretty good shape. You have mandatory services for the residents. They have the source separation that the state is looking for. You're, you're pretty well set for your residential program. For your commercial program, you have the services available, but only subscription to garbage is mandatory. Subscription to recycling and organics is not yet mandatory. And so the biggest lift that you have around the collection program is getting all of those folks that aren't currently participating in recycling or organic separation participating in that program, not just commercial, but any multifamily properties as well, which is a bit of a challenge. So thanks to Recology for the graphics. The other piece of context here is you're part of a special thing in the state of California called a regional agency. And CalRecycle, the state regulatory agency in charge of this stuff, gives special authority, responsibilities to regional agencies, particularly to deal with the reporting and record-keeping pieces of this. But also, many regional agencies throughout the state take a facilitative role in a number of these programs. And so the Regional Waste Management Authority has actually contracted with our firm to help look at an organizational study for how that agency could operate particularly around the expansions that are needed here for 1383, but also just for the longevity of the program. So that's an important piece of context and it means that you can sort of, you could leverage those regional partners to pool some of your resources rather than replicating things six times in each agency. So our recommendations are soon, work with Recology to understand what it would take to expand those food waste programs to the remaining generators that don't have them. Start working on developing local ordinances and policies. Good news on both of those. CalRecycle is working on model ordinances and model franchise agreement language that is supposed to help local agencies, you know, with what will need to be implemented and you can tailor those models. So that's great. State's helping you on that. And then coordinate regionally with your RWMA partners on things like edible food recovery, the monitoring and enforcement requirements, any infrastructure planning that's needed to support those things. And then ultimately, the record-keeping and reporting that will need to go to the state because that piece is going to be pretty significant. As we've looked at these things in other jurisdictions, almost every agency around the state is looking at what is the staffing impact of this? And as you heard in public comment earlier, what's the PERS impact of this? So these are, these are significant things that the state is asking and getting some, getting ahead of them and doing the planning makes a lot of sense. So I'm here for any questions you may have of me.
Go ahead. Through the mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It sounded as if you told us the state hasn't completed all of its requirements yet. Do we have an idea of when that might happen?
So they have submitted the draft regulations to the Office of Administrative Law as of two weeks ago. And so they come out of Office of Administrative Law on our official March 4th, I believe, or March 6th.
Well, that's better than some of their regulations. So the timeline, if you could, for us to get going and when we would need to be completed, do you have any opinion on that?
We're recommending that folks have ordinances done, any amendments you need to do to your franchises taken care of about six months early so that there's some lead time to implement things. The ordinances could become effective, you know, January 1 of 2022. But having the staff work done, having the council and public input processes and all of that done by July of 21 is really ideal. And so that means fairly quickly getting to the table with Recology and understanding what the gap is between current And doing that again with your regional partners to understand, are there ways that you can share in that? Makes some sense. And then this organizational study with the RWMA has just gotten started, just got approved with them, and should take somewhere around six months to conclude. So we're hoping to get everything pretty well settled for you guys in time.
Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yep. Thank you for bringing this up tonight. I'm actually the vice chair for the RWMA, and I brought this at our last council meeting because this did come up on the radar. We approved the study you're doing. We do have to address this, and we do need to be aware of this, and the one thing that I want to make sure this council does is works collaboratively with the RWMA because we are a regional type of situation with a single service provider. They've already probably through some work that you preliminary did with them has identified several sources that are already doing sorting as it's going to be required. They've identified some major contributors that are not yet sorting as it's going to be required. The consensus that we got from Mr. Martin, nothing's been finalized, but the consensus was, is to try to organize this from the RWMA standpoint to make recommendations out to all partners of RWMA as to what the ordinances should look like, because it's going to be easier for the local municipalities to do that, and the accountability lies with us as well. And the fines, as you said, are quite steep. So my commitment to this city and the council is to keep you guys informed with any information that I get. We did commission the study, so probably six to nine months, we should have something here by the fall. But more, most importantly, is we work together as a community with the RWMA as it was designed to make sure we're leveraging each other the way it should and not going rogue and on our own and trying to be the sole person with all the answers. And I think that that's the tone this council set, and I would love for us to make sure that we're plugged into RWMA and worked collaboratively with them to get this solution done.
Through the mayor. I agree with you. I think that it's important. I really like the fact that the efforts are going to be coordinated regionally. I'm always in support of things being supported in that manner, especially it allows for people to have similar kinds of services across the region. I am curious about the study that you're going to be conducting for RWMA. Can you kind of, you know, quick summary, share that?
Sure. So when the RWMA was formed, it went through the LAFCO in two different counties to assign powers from the cities, and there was a joint powers agreement that was drawn up, and it conveyed certain powers at that time. When it was formed, those powers were fairly limited. As I said, it's really around the reporting and record-keeping that the regional agency acts currently. If going forward, you wanted them to do things like enforcement, additional powers would have to get assigned to them and additional responsibilities added through the JPA. Similarly, if you wanted them to go around and do the contamination monitoring or assist with the edible food recovery infrastructure development or those sorts of things, their charter essentially would need to get modified, probably going through LAFCO again for that, or possibly even going to the state to create a legislative district or something. So the purpose of the organizational study is to understand, along a spectrum, what should the RWMA be doing? What should each of the member agencies be doing? What could Recology be doing? And how does the partnership work amongst the various parties? And then what are the resource needs? So as we expand to deal with the requirements of 1383, it's going to mean more hours, more bodies, more work, and so looking at how best to organize that. And so our charter is to kind of look at a few different models for other JPAs that deal with solid waste around the state and help you guys understand the pros and cons of those various things and working with, kind of facilitating amongst the jurisdictions to come up with a recommendation amongst the city managers and county administrators about how best to move forward organizationally. That could mean at one end of the spectrum dissolving the JPA, and each agency is on their own to deal with this. At the other end of the spectrum, it may be adding a number of powers to them, consolidating contracting authority, assigning police powers so that they can do enforcement, and really ramping them up to deal with the level of effort that's required. So that's pretty much the focus and the results. Each member agency has to sign on to the joint powers agreement and has to agree for any transfer of powers. So this is really just to study the options and get you guys some data to make some decisions on.
Thank you. So after the study is completed, presented, options are going to be determined, and it's going to be through the RWMA. And in that, the discussions, a vote will happen or something, or will you bring back the study to this council for review?
Yeah, through the mayor. Just to put it in perspective, there's more people in this room here tonight than the RWMA has total. So the, they're just a handful of people for reporting purposes. I believe we have six, maybe seven, that actually does all the reporting. It's also the same people that handle regional transit. Heese Office is doing both of this. The discussion was, kind of what he was alluding to, is to do the study, figure out the recommendations, and transfer probably that authority and that power back to the municipalities, or either have them come up with a separate JPA or something to do the enforcement because there's not the manpower, the capacity there to do it. There's really nothing that the RWMA is going to pass that will come down and be a directive. It's more of they're doing the homework, trying to pull all five together to come up with solutions, and then that'll be communicated back through city managers, the members of the RWMA, to the councils. Each municipality has to decide what they want to do and the best approach.
Right.
But they're trying to figure it out collectively and give everyone all the information.
Perfect. That's exactly what I understood. I was just wanting to clarify if you were going to bring that back to us as a council, and it sounds like you're going to do that, and each of the city managers and CAOs will be involved in all the entire process.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
I guess you're the spokesman for the jurisdictions, I hope. I wanted to talk about the edible recovery.
Sure.
Last four years, I've gone through two, what do we call it? I'm going blind, I'm going blank here. Where we had, where we took care of people. Oh, my God.
Feeding event of some sort?
Pardon?
A soup kitchen or a feeding event?
No, not soup kitchen. We had, well, we had the two fires. We had Lo Marica once, and we had Paradise Second. So we had, you know, people in, and folks were cooking, folks were bringing the stuff, and the health, I wanted to mention, is the health department, you brought that food in, we had to throw it away the next day. And it was good food, we could serve them, it was refrigerated, that rang out, and the health department said, you're done. At the end of the day, you're done, it's gone. So I'm hoping the state thinks about this because they want us to recover this and give it to people that need it. And from what I've seen, two times, it's you get one shot and you're done, and that's, and it was very, it was a lot of wasteful food, lots, lots of wasteful food. So this grand idea I have, I hope they have the answers for it, is my concern.
You know, they don't have all the answers, unfortunately, but what they do have is they've got some good models out there that are working. Fresno, Sacramento, LA, San Diego have amazing food recovery networks, partnering between the food banks and the soup kitchens and the faith-based feeding organizations and things like that. And the Departments of Environmental Health around the state are engaged on this issue to try and make sure it's safe first. We don't want to feed people bad food, but also facilitate means and methods for getting this food in stable ways to the people that need it. So yes, that's part of the challenge, and it's part of the reason that they're at 20% edible food recovery, not more, is they realize feeding people safely is the first priority. And so all those, you know, environmental health rules that are out there about how long things are out after they've been heated, and when they need to get back in the fridge, and how long they can be in the fridge for, and all of that, are very good at keeping us all healthy and safe and reducing food poisoning and all of that, and we want them to keep doing it. But, you know, there is a, there is an opportunity there, and there are some good models out there of how this works, so we need to get those best practices pushed out and shared with folks and help train those feeding organizations to make sure they know the rules and they're doing things in the right way so they don't waste quite as much. But there's a phenomenal amount of waste around this issue.
Yes. And for all you folks out there, I finally figured I was two evacuations. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. I'm just hoping it works out right, because like I said, at the end of the day, at 9:00 at night, we were just throwing tons of food away, which it could have been used the next day, and they said, nope, you're done. So I hope it works out right. Thank you.
All right, some good questions, and thank you for the presentation. It's informative. Sounds like we have a big challenge as a community ahead of us. But we thank you for that information. Also thank Recology for their efforts and contributions and anticipated participation in this. It's got to be a thrill. But it's all for a good purpose. I understand the concern, you know, stuff you may be okay at home, but when we talk the whole public health, they draw the line really low, and there is a reason for that. So thank you very much. This is a, just simply a note and a file. Would anybody from the public care to comment on anything?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, come on up, and if you don't mind, please state your name.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Michael Dorman. I'm a resident of Yuba City. This last agenda item, whenever we talk about giving police powers or powers of enforcement to anyone that is not a sworn law enforcement officer, that raises some real concern with me, especially considering the folks that are driving the trucks for Recology are doing a great job, but dealing with them, they don't always know the policies and procedures of the company. So you get spotty enforcement of the rules that are already in place for Recology. This is from a homeowner. So giving them the power to then fine me if they don't like how I've separated, excuse me, separated my recycling and trash creates a real problem, not just for me out of my pocketbook, but spotty enforcement, incorrect enforcement. Please, please be very careful before we give anybody any extra power to cause me pocketbook problems. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else care to speak? All right, we'll go ahead and move on to thank everybody one more time, and we'll move on to item number... We're skipping number 12, we're going on to number 13, which is Fire Department Clerical Services. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members. I stand before you today requesting a resolution for a budget transfer from the capital improvement program into the amount of $13,680 into the fire administration account. This is a fund temporary administrative clerical support person in the fire department due to an unscheduled leave of absence, which is not to exceed a period of 11 weeks. The fund transfer will allow for the fire department to fill clerical functions at the fire department administrative building, which assists with administrative functions as well as supporting the fire department's prevention bureau. Under the current budget, funding is unavailable to hire someone to provide a replacement on a temporary full-time basis due to this leave of absence being unscheduled and not budgeted in the normal budgeting process. This fund reallocation will allow the fire department to work with the HR department to find the most cost-effective option for finding the best person that can meet the operational needs within our critical timeline. This may include hiring a temporary 40-week employee at the cost of $31.09 per hour, which includes benefits. Utilizing the services of a temporary employment agency may be less costly and is the preferred method to meet this immediate need. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Any member of the public care to comment on it? All right. Very thorough presentation there. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. We can take an action if anybody's interested. We have a speaker?
Well, last minute.
Last minute.
I'm Elaine Miles, and in reading this, are we adding to the budget for a year? Do we have a person that's sick? What in the heck are we doing here? I don't understand it from this. Fund temporary administrative clerical support in the fire department. Are you hiring a new secretary or something?
Let me help you out right there.
What? Thank you.
So we have, we have one clerical individual in the fire administration department. She's going to be out for an extended period on the Family Marriage and Leave Medical Act, so it's going to be out for an extended period of time.
Okay, so she's being paid and you're getting one for her.
Yes.
Wish it'd been written clearer.
Thank you for your question, Elaine. Anybody else care to comment?
Through the mayor.
Quick here. Go ahead, Manny.
Okay, I moved staff's recommendation for the fire department clerical services, adopt a resolution authorizing the budget transfer capital improvement project account, 901236, fire station number two renovation, in the amount of $13,680 to the fire administrative professional services account, 2305-62701, to fund temporary administrative clerical support to the fire department during the subject staffing vacancy, not to exceed a period of 11 weeks, and B, approve modification of the fire administration budget of additional funding allocation amount of $13,680.
Second.
First and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, chief. One more here. Fire inspection contract services.
Mayor, council members, stand before you today requesting a resolution for a budget transfer from the capital improvement program in the amount of $70,400 into the fire administration account. This is a fund temporary fire inspection services in the fire department due to an unscheduled leave of absence, which is not to exceed a period of 16 weeks. This would include adopting a resolution approving the Yuba City firefighters' local 3793 side letter regarding temporary fire inspection services. This fund transfer will allow the fire department, and specifically the fire prevention bureau, to perform the life safety and state mandated inspections of businesses, plan checks, inspections, monitor new construction, and meet the requirements of Senate Bill 1205 for mandated inspections of schools, hotels, motels, and apartments. Under the current budget, funding is unavailable to hire someone to provide a replacement on a temporary full-time basis due to the leave of absence being unscheduled and not budgeted in the normal budgeting process. The fund reallocation will allow the fire department to work with the HR department to find the most cost-effective option for finding the best person to meet the operational needs within our critical timeline. The three options that we are proposing is to, the first, contract with a fully licensed consulting firm to provide immediate fire inspection services. This rate is up to, up to $110 per hour, which includes all overhead costs. These are certified specialists that will be able to immediately perform the needed inspections. Option two is to hire an individual on a temporary full-time basis. Under this option, we will work with the HR department, fill the position with a replacement who meets the minimum qualifications and is the most cost-effective at roughly $44.91 per hour. Option three, which is what we believe is the most, best option, is a combination of the two. This is where we enter into an agreement with a qualified contractor to provide the service while working with the HR department to recruit a qualified individual. This will allow us the flexibility to provide both cost-effective and quality fire inspection services to the residents, businesses, and the department and the community without disruption. Do you have any questions?
You have any?
I just wondered if I could apply.
Apply? Yeah.
Not for a year.
I know.
Elaine, I'm assuming similar question is, do you have any? You good? Okay, you're good. All right.
The exact same scenario.
Pretty much same thing, yeah. One more time? Sure, go right ahead. If you could just get to the microphone first, sir, thank you. No worries.
Again, Michael Dorman. Chief, how much would it cost to have more staff certified to do the inspection on an annual basis? Thanks.
I don't have the exact number on that me right now, but roughly about $44.91 for salary, benefits, everything that's associated with that, and that's what we'd be looking for when we were recruiting for a full-time temporary position.
when we were recruiting for a full-time temporary position.
Good question. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing a budget transfer from capital improvement program account 901236, fire station number two renovation, in the amount of $70,400 to the fire administration professional services account 23056207, 62701, excuse me, to fund temporary fire inspection services during an extended staffing vacancy not to exceed a period of 16 weeks. And I just lost the rest of the motion.
There you go.
Approve, item B, approve modification of the fire administration budget of an additional funding allocation in the amount of up to $70,400. And item C, adopt a resolution approving the Yuba City firefighters' local 3793 side letter regarding temporary fire inspection services.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second to approve. Staff recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Fifteen, Police Department workstation modifications project, Lieutenant Runyon.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So in the fiscal year of 1920, a capital improvement project was approved and budgeted for a remodel of the dispatch center and for one of the investigations unit offices. The budgeted amount for the project was $140,000. Dispatch center is approximately 27 years old and has the original workstations. The laminate on many of the cabinets and desktops is worn and peeling in places. Right Line LLC out of Chicago has contractor pricing through the state, and they specialize in building and designing dispatch centers. Going through a contractor with state pricing saves the city's staff time on getting different bids and gives us a, a competitive price. The remodel will include new lighting, flooring, and workstations, bringing the 24-hour dispatch center to current standards. The total for the remodel through Right Line LLC out of Chicago is $96,962.17. The remodel and the investigations unit will provide workstations and storage for additional privacy and security when working on sensitive investigations. The workstations are being configured within an existing office that is currently not in use. With the additional money, the police department would like the wallpaper removed and walls textured in a common area of the building. This is an original part of the building since 1993 and has excessive wear and stains from over the years. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution awarding a remodel of the dispatch center to Right Line LLC of Chicago in the amount of $96,962.17.
Any public comments? There she comes.
I'm sorry. Years ago, when this issue came up, Yuba City and Sutter County did not go together for emergency dispatching and so forth, and possibly having a unit together. We're still apart, is what I understand. Is that correct? Why don't we coordinate? When we're looking at the thing that was presented earlier, we're going to coordinate with everybody. But when it comes to police and fire, I really would like it all coordinated, the county and the cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. That's a big, 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 big topic, well, well, well beyond remodeling the workstations. Would you, did you say you have something to add in? Would you like some comment from a vice mayor slash former fire chief? There you go.
I would yield to the police chief first for the current situation, and if any, if there's any value in me sharing the history of, of how we have attempted to lead that effort from Yuba City, I'd be happy to provide that.
So first of all, this is, these are totally different things. We're talking about workstation modifications. We're not talking about all the stuff that goes into making a regional consolidated dispatch center, because then you're talking millions and millions of dollars. And so different ballparks, we've tried to address that several times in the past, but it's not cost-effective. Different, and I know the vice mayor has a lot of history because we both went through this several times trying to reach some type of a conclusion. But just to ease your mind, we work very well with the other centers. We do. If our, if Yuba City's dispatch goes out for any reason, we have the ability to switch over to Sutter County Fire and Police. It's the same with Sutter County. If for some reason there's a problem with their dispatch center, they can transfer over to us, and we'll take all their calls just as well. So we work very well together, but we just work out of separate buildings. And a lot of times, that comes down to county and city have different functions. A sheriff's number one priority is to staff the jail, and a police department's number one priority is to do 911 calls. Not that they don't do 911 calls just as well, but we have different priorities, so it just, and I'll yield it back to the vice mayor.
I think, and Chief Landon accurately represented, the city, at least since I was involved with the city, has, has attempted to get together with the other regional areas, police, fire, et cetera, for a joint emergency operations center, which would include the dispatch. My opinion about why that hasn't happened over time is simply about dollars having to be spent on the front side to achieve the efficiencies and the, and the, the time that it would take for the return on that investment. We all, unless things have changed, Yuba County, Marysville, Yuba City are all, and Sutter County are all operating on different software systems. Okay, so you would have to try to come together to, to select a software system for the emergency dispatch, records management, et cetera. Huge expense. You'd have to cite a location, big expense. And you would also have to deal with issues such as staffing and other things, as the chief mentioned, different missions that the county sheriff and, and the city police departments. Certainly not something that shouldn't be done. As a person here, I would tell you that I, I would be very, very supportive of it, but there's a lot of ground to cover before we can make that happen, unfortunately. But it makes all the sense in the world, so your, your concern is extremely valid. There's just a lot of political stuff and financial stuff that, that would be, that would be hurdles that would have to be overcome.
Through the mayor. I, I just want to say that I also would agree with the vice mayor. I think that I would be very supportive of us to do something to that effect, and if there's opportunity for us to move in that direction, I would be open to further discussions and for our cities, our city to be involved in, in that concept that was discussed.
And just to make it really clear about the cost, we do have different radio, our entire system is different than the sheriffs. Yuba and Sutter are kind of similar, and I think they're going towards the same direction because they've just purchased new software. For us to make that initial investment, just to have the same as them, talking just radio CAD systems, the computer rated dispatch and stuff like that, it's well over $2 million just to get a different system than we currently have, which works well for us.
Thank you. So we'll go back to the item, Police Department workstation modification project.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I move for the Police Department workshop, excuse me, workstation modification project recommendation, adopt the resolution awarding the remodel of the Police Department dispatch center to Right Line LLC of Chicago, Illinois, in the amount of $96,962.17 by piggybacking on the state contract pricing with the finding that it's the best interest of the city.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Lieutenant. We'll be on to number 16, appointments of budget oversight ad hoc committee. What? Ad hoc committee and local agency, excuse me, we're just doing appointments to budget oversight ad hoc committee. That would be A, and we're getting rid of, we're not going over 16B. We're removing that one. This is essentially appointing myself and Council Member Shaw to the ad hoc committee, similar to what we did last year, to where we work with the finance director, city manager, and department heads to go over a budget. Lessons learned from last year. We will go ahead and have at least one, if not more, workshops involving all five council members once we prepare a draft budget so we can get down to the details regarding all the, all the, all the items on the budget. Big long process, a lot of detail, a lot of studying and homework on that deal, and we appreciate and advance your expertise and Spencer's expertise on this item. So that will be what we're going to do. It might be myself and Council Member Shaw is the proposal. Before I take action on that, would anybody in the public like to speak on number 16A? All right.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Just want to bring up a couple of quick points of clarification. This is an ad hoc committee, and we did have it last year, and the ad hoc committee did not have any authority or delegation without this full council. We were basically advisory on behalf of the council. And then secondly, that ad hoc committee ceased to exist after the budget was passed last year. Our job was done. And I believe our intent this year in staying with that is that this ad hoc committee would come up, go through the same process, and then would be no more after we adopt the budget approximately late June or somewhere in that, that timeframe, by July, so.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. Anybody?
Through the mayor. I move to designate Mayor Harris, Council Member Shaw, to serve on a city council budget oversight ad hoc committee from April 2020 to budget adoption in June of 2020.
Second.
All right, have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None. Thank you very much. We'll be on to 17, the CalPERS unfunded liability committee recommendations. We have, as folks may know, we had a series of meetings last year, and thank you in advance to, or excuse, thank you all again to Terrell for all the work she did. I don't believe anybody else is in the room right now, but it takes a lot of work and organization to put that together, so it's much appreciated. So that came about as a series of recommendations that we're going, the intent is to put together and draft a, in, in letter format, and hopefully at least make a, an attempt to get other local municipalities to agree with us and sign on so we can give that letter to send down south to a point yet to be determined. But I would like, if you wouldn't mind elaborating a little bit, Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and there's several in the room here that went through the six-month journey with us. We explored all possibilities, and just as we said, Mr. Trainer, we said we were bringing this back in February to come before the council because we needed council's endorsement behind this. Do you have the presentation from November 21st? Perfect. I can walk through this very, very quickly because this was a summation. I'm going to take a 30-minute presentation and turn it to about two and a half. Oh, you can click right through it. It's fine. Cliché it, Terrell. I'll go. Click. There we go. We covered everything starting August 15th. We had various guests. Click. This is working. We had League of California Cities. We had CalPERS. We had numerous experts here. Click. November 21st is where we came together to talk about what we might do, and then December 19th, we summed, summed it up. So click. We made sure all the material was out on the websites. There was a big, huge, thick binder. All the videos from all the processes we went through are still out there so anyone could watch them, and we wanted to make sure that everyone was well informed. We had city employees, we had members of the public, members of the council. It was collaborative effort. Click. And click. There we go. And you can find all this, again, back at our Yuba City, City of Yuba City website. Click. Go on through. Keep going. There we go. Our unfunded liability, these are the last numbers at that point that we had. Our unfunded liability right now is roughly about $79 million. It is indicative, and it fluctuates based upon the returns from the PERS investments, and we have no control over that. Click forward, please. We talked about options that came out, taking action against CalPERS, require more from employees, pull out of CalPERS, assemble a unified group. I can tell you now, pulling out of CalPERS was not an option because we made a promise to all the retirees, and it would take over $400 million to do that. If we did not pay the 400-plus million into that, then the retirees would take a personal hit in their retirement. We made a promise, people. We decided we need to keep the promise, and that's the recommendation that came forward. So that also goes forward with filing bankruptcy and everything else. It's just not viable options. This was the projected path. We can kind of roll through. Shows our rising cost. You can see that our interest was a little over $5 million, and we made a payment of 5.3. We can click forward. I kind of want to get to the, stop. Those are the two numbers of what it would take out of our funds in order to walk away from CalPERS. You can see that that is not an option. We can keep going forward. Action to date, we've been making extra payments from our pension stabilization trust fund that saved us several hundred thousand dollars a year. Instead of making monthly payments, we make annual payments upfront to save the interest like would be charged on a home mortgage or something every month. We paid it upfront. There is no more interest for that year. And, you know, PERS impacts, we always take that inspiration, as do the unions, every time we have sat down and had contract negotiations, which was very important for the public to understand, that our team is very, very conscientious of the impact. That's why you see things like ongoing 1% tonight plus a one-time stipend because the ongoing is PERS-able, but the one-time, when it's combined with it, is not. So it makes a huge difference. Let's keep going, and let's just keep going to, I think, about the end. Keep going one more. That talks about all the things we have. Let's go to the final one possibly. Back up one. I can summarize it. Basically, where we're at is, and we've heard this through the, the current season, because as you know, it's election season out there, and I've been to several of the forums with Sutter County, and they all talk about, take the fight to Sacramento. Well, what in the bloody heck are we going to ask Sacramento to do? We're just going to say, hey, fix PERS? We had to have some real ideas. Some of the things that came out that we want to write this letter about and get others to join us is the first thing has to do with the PERS board. The PERS board is supposed to have a fiduciary responsibility to do what's in the best interest of the stakeholders, who are the annuitants under PERS. The problem is, is our current PERS board, two-thirds of that board is appointed, not elected, by our governor. The governor turns around, and this is where the games get kind of funky, turns around and writes an executive order that says, PERS will divest itself from oil. And then he turns and says, but the PERS board doesn't have to follow my recommendation. Oh, wait a minute. You appointed two-thirds of them and gave them a job, and you're going to say do this. So it starts causing a conflict of interest. So that was one idea, is to, let's take a harsh look at how the fiduciary board at PERS is elected or appointed because they truly have a fiduciary responsibility. And with my expertise in the financial realm, the Securities and Exchange Commission, FINRA, adopted Reg BI, which stands for best interest. You are supposed to be doing what's in the best interest for the stakeholders as a fiduciary. So we kind of see that as a leverage to request that they look at the structure of the appointment of the PERS board so there's not direct influence by the governor. The other part of the equation to determine if we have to pay more or less revolves around the returns of PERS. That gets into the divesting of certain things that we have no control over. So one of the questions that came up was, how much was the management fee that's being charged to the PERS fund to run PERS? And one of the recommendations that we wanted to ask for, it's around 1%, was simply that if we're not going to have a say as a participant in PERS for our, our employees and our retirees, then we're going to ask the state of California to cover that management fee, and that's huge because the numbers that were just updated, the return was 6.75, and they run it on a baseline of seven, and if it went down, that means our cost goes up. Now, in two years, when it catches up, we've had a phenomenal year in the market, that might be seven and a half, which means our, our amount goes down that we have to pay. But in a normal year, if we reached two years ago, 675, if the state of California had simply covered out of the general fund, the 1% management fee, wow, our returns would have been 775, and our amounts for unfunded pension liability would have gone down. So these are the types of actions that we actually want to take to Sacramento to say, look, let's look at the appointment of the board. Let's look at covering the fees. And then finally, if you're not going to give us any option as far as what we're divesting from, and we're not going to do this in the best interest of our from, and we're not going to do this in the best interest of our annuitants, that we feel like the state of California at the state level should cover the losses incurred because they're the ones that's in control. So instead of going down to Sacramento and saying, we got to take the fight to Sacramento with no ideas, these are viable options that we can take. Now, we're one small municipality. So if the council grants us the permission to craft this letter, and the letter will come back before the council, of course, so they know exactly what we're signing on for, then we would take that and hopefully form a coalition and get our regional partners here, Sutter County, Alivo, Uba County, Marysville, everything that's local here on board with us. We could take this to the League of California Cities, try to get some traction with this. Now, I'm going to tell you right now, if it's not dealing with a couple of hot topics, there's people in our state houses that do not want to hear any of this, and that's going to fall on deaf ears. This is why the second recommendation we have, because again, of what I do, I brought forward as a recommendation. If you remember at the beginning, I said there was a little reg called BI, best interest. We feel like a copy of this letter with everyone that signs onto it should go forward to the Securities and Exchange Commission and FINRA, who manage and govern investment policies and what goes on there, to where maybe if our leadership in the state will not listen to us, maybe they'll listen to someone in the federal government that actually regulates myself and everyone else that handles money. And that's the best idea that we could come out with for right now. The California rule got voted down, so there was no other option for us to pull out and go to 403Bs, 401Ks, anything like that, because it was upheld in the court. So this is at least some action. I wish we could do more, but at least it's something definitive that we can take to our state house and to the bodies in DC that oversee investments to try to get some change.
Very good. Really appreciate the commentary and your expertise, Dave. Thank you very much. Anybody from the public care to comment on that item? From up here?
Through the mayor. In looking at the recommendation and listening, Councilwoman Shaw and Mayor Harris, I appreciate the fact of all the work that you put into hosting the workshops and the meetings. I'm in support of the letter. I just, in the recommendation, it states here to prepare and sign the letter outlining. I would be more than happy to review the letter as we get to that point with, before the authorization of actually signing this letter. And possibly at the same time, if we're able to, if you're able to begin the conversation with the other regions, maybe a letter from the multiple region might be even carry a little bit more weight than just coming from us. So those are just, you know, two of my thoughts. If we're going to look at this particular motion, I would like to amend that if we get there.
All right. Well, that makes complete sense. I know the, if it's a minimum, it will come from us, in which case I would sign that. But as Councilmember Shaw said, we will come back for approval for the entire council and be reaching out. If we have anybody who would like to join us, then we would definitely have another signature line on that page, if you will. So, thank you for that. Did you have something, Manny? Sure.
I wonder if anybody on the council has ever read the original contract with PERS? And I'm asking a question.
I believe I did when I got hired up at City of Uba City 40 years ago. But I can't remember it at this time.
I was going to ask you for a good memory on that.
Yeah, they give us all a copy when we get hired on with the city. They give us a copy of that.
Is it us?
I couldn't tell you anything at this time, though. I'm sorry.
And that pertain to the overall conditions that were in there between the city and PERS? Is that correct? Or was this just for the employee?
That would just be an employee.
Yeah. So what I'm asking is, has anybody on the board read the original contract between the city and PERS? I doubt it. I don't think, I've asked this question before.
Okay, keep in mind, this is comment time. Do you have a statement you'd like to make, Phil?
The statement is that I would hope that the board, that the council will read the original contract, then come back and tell the public what's in it. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, is that public information?
I would think so. It's publicly accessible, so if you have the internet, you're more than welcome to knock yourself out.
You're passing the buck?
If you want to read it.
Yeah.
It's pretty long for us to come back and summarize it to you.
I was hoping that the council would give their opinion as to what's in there. I can read it, but that doesn't mean it a damn thing.
Through the mayor.
Okay. Tell you what's in it, it's a pretty broad stroke there.
Thank you.
Yeah, through the mayor.
All right, go ahead.
Mr. Trainer, just to address your concerns, the contract is all over 50 years old and has been amended probably 75 times, but as we write and craft the letter, we will reference any important sections, subsections of that contract, which in the current state, just my one council member's opinion, they probably got us over a barrel, just the way the contract was probably written and the way they've changed it over the years. So that's why we've got to come at it with a two-prong approach.
Okay, I'll just say this. One of the reasons I bring this up is that I read the contract between Uba County on the Water Agency back in 1959 and PG&E. That contract was six pages. Six single pages, and very easy to read. So maybe the CalPERS contract may not be that extensive. Who knows what's in there? You may be paying money into somebody that doesn't even exist anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Help us all.
Thank you very much. Anybody else care to comment? I see one in the corner of my eye. Rick Dias.
I want to thank the city for the six meetings we had, especially, I know Robyn's out here.
Thank you for coming.
She provided a lot of information, and there's a lot of information. I want to thank Phil Trainer for getting me involved in this whole mess many years ago. It's not an easy issue. One thing, we do want to take care of the employees. That's very, that's very clear. Every time I address the Sutter County supervisors, that's where we all got involved back then. The last comment I would make is, if you're promising your employees a benefit you can't pay for, that's immoral. And that's kind of where we've gotten. It's not to follow this council. It's probably to follow some other councils. There was a lot of misinformation, but I hope that when you're out and about, you do let your citizens know how much, what a problem this is. You've got $79 million in unfunded liability, and you've got several plans. I'm just going to dwell on the, not the worst plan, the most serious problem you have. Safety first for Uba City. Firemen, policemen, a plan that was left 20 years ago, so it's almost fully mature. You've got four active members in that plan. You've got 107 retirees. And for that plan, 25 million unfunded, a plan that represents four people, the four active people in it. So of the 79 million, 25 million is for a plan that only covers four people. And for those four people, Uba City is going to be sending CalPERS this year $1.8 million for four people. Yeah. Put a fork in it, it's done. Not your fault, but you need to let people know how serious this is, and you need their help. And every citizen in this town and the county and surrounding areas should be involved. So it's not on your shoulders. It's on all of our shoulders, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dias. Anybody else? All right. So let's see here. Help me out, where we leave off? We need a motion?
Direction to write the letter.
Directions to write the letter, prepare the letter, bring it forth to council, get approval on that letter, and then we'll reach out to other folks. Does that make sense? All right. I'll go ahead and make that motion then.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? None. Thank you very much. All right, so now we're going to go to future agenda items. Mr. City Manager, anything to add on that?
No, nothing in particular, other than the council did direct staff to set up a community meeting to discuss flavored tobacco. So we'll be working on setting up a special council meeting for that in the next three to, two to three, four weeks. We have several more community conversation meetings that the council also directed that we set up, and we'll get that word out to the community very, very soon on when those meetings will take place and where. There will be one daytime meeting on the community conversation at the senior center, and we'll get you those exact dates very shortly. And we'll be getting the word out through social media, the Appeal Democrat, and other avenues. Thank you.
Through the mayor. Through the mayor. What is the status of our use permit ordinance change? We're supposed to go back for some wordsmithing. Is we looking at that at the next meeting or the first meeting of March? That was on the last agenda, or last meeting's agenda?
Oh, it has to go to the planning commission first, and it'll go to the planning commission on February, or February 26th, and we'll come back to the city council in the first meeting in March.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right. We'll move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I just have a couple of items. The City of Uba City received the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers Operating Budget Excellence Award for the fiscal year 1920. This is the 19th year in a row we have won this award. Thank you to the finance department, which is not here tonight because they're working in their offices right now, getting the mid-year budget ready. This Friday, February 7th, Uba City Police, first Fridays at the senior center, 9:00 to 11:00 AM at the senior center on 777 Ainsley Avenue. Uba City Police will have a booth set up with information on fraud prevention, current scams, the voice program, and other issues that our senior population might face. Uba City Police Department will also have a drop-off container for expired or unused medication. For more information, please contact our senior center. Uba City Police Department will have a citizens academy that starts on Thursday, February 27th, and continues every Thursday night for 12 weeks. Citizen academy is free, but space is limited. Please apply online at the city's website or come by the police department on Pool Boulevard, 1545 Pool Boulevard. Deadline to apply is February 21st, Friday, the 21st. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. City council reports, beginning with Councilmember Cardosa.
All righty. A little bit lighter since a couple of weeks. I'm going to start with chamber events tonight. Attended the bachelor's monthly meeting. We're moving forward. We got plans for 2020. Got the gala that's coming up at the end of the month, and then the Swan, the Swan Festival that'll be coming up in the next few months. We're looking to expand and have great things with the chamber here in this next year. Attended the Business Connection Breakfast. Bill O'Forrester Space was the talk. They're bringing back the air show this year, and they're going to have quite the show. They're going to have the Thunderbirds there and quite a few other groups. I just got the main one that I'm aware of, but there's going to be quite bigger and better, and they're expecting quite a few people. I helped with the Sutter County Candidate Forum. I'm in the chamber, I'm the bachelor of the chamber. So I was at the Sutter County Candidate Forum with the chamber, picking up question cards and passing them to the speakers to, so in order for them to get the speakers. For meetings, attended the Bi-County Homeless Service Government Affairs Meeting. We're moving forward. We're working together with the consortium to all be together as one, moving forward to help the homeless in both sides of the river. Attended the Sutter County-Bus city joint homeless ad hoc committee, Councilmember Espandola and myself. Michael Rock was all there. We had a phone call from San Diego Mayor Kevin Faulkner, and was giving us great ideas here in the community, the things that they do down there, and hopefully we can do the great things that he does up here and get the homeless off the streets and into homes and out of the river bottoms, so on and so forth. Attended the, it was a workshop for the Safe Routes to Schools workshop. They set out, we're getting ideas in the community, it'll be brought to council here, I believe, next month. Ideas for crosswalks, getting children to school safely, bike paths, so on and so forth. And then council had, we had a couple of special meetings last week. The council had a meeting with the commissioners, and then we also have our community conversations. Our Sydney community event yesterday, we attended a swearing-in, council attended a swearing-in, and badge pending ceremony for four new firefighters, and also our new fire chief, Jesse. It was a great occasion. Attended Waffle Wednesday Senior Center, helped serve waffles. We're getting bigger and better every year, or excuse me, every month, and we're getting more and more people. Pretty soon, we're going to have to get two rooms. Community events, excuse me. Attended a community event hosted by Mayor Harris and the Arts Council, the 550-year anniversary of Guru Narja. I want to make sure I say that right. He was the founder of Sikhism, and that was a great, well, it was a good turnout at the arts center. I learned a lot, and so we celebrated the anniversary of that. And then Friday night, we went down to Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Converse, 125th year anniversary, the business awards dinner, and watched a few awards and the great things that Sacramento region is doing, and hopefully that'll come to us also and make our city and county bigger and better also. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Espandola.
Thank you, Mayor. And trying to save some time here because Councilman Cardosa has already spoken a few items that we co-shared, so I'll just highlight the areas that maybe give you some additional information. So the community and conversation, as we move forward, I hope that we find some locations, and I'm happy to hear that we're going to be at the senior center. That's a good location for us to go. It was really, it was a learning opportunity for, as a council member, to see our community be able to voice their thoughts and for them also to identify priorities in the priorities that we have established as a city council. So as we go throughout the city, I've heard nothing but really good feedback from the community in reference to us having done this. A workshop that we all attended, which is the Brown Act and bringing us all up to speed, and our swift, great city attorney over there, Shannon, did an amazing job on keeping us all in line with the rules here, so thank you. I am newly assigned to the Sutter Butte Flood Control. I learned quite a bit of, I met with Michael and had a one-on-one, bring you up to speed on everything that the Sutter Butte flood control is, what's happening. And so I'm actually, our next meeting's next Wednesday, and I'll be joining them for the breakfast, I mean, excuse me, the lunch, give the preview of that. But we have a lot of the levies completed in Butte and Sutter County. A lot of good progress is being made there, and perhaps in the future, we can have him come in and do another presentation, because I think he comes in annually, and I could be incorrect about that, but I believe he does. So with the Bi-County Homeless Committee and the Uba-Sutter Homeless Consortium, many representatives gave updates on the different committees that the Bi-County Homeless Committee, Councilman Cardosa sits on that particular group. And one of the things that happened after the meeting is that we ended up sitting together with, and Brad McIntyre was there representing the city with the consortium, to begin merging the Bi-County Community Homeless Committee with the consortium, and have representatives from the Bi-County Homeless Committee be on the consortium as an advisory, and more of a governmental affair advisory for the consortium. And we are in the process of hiring an executive director through the homeless consortium, and interviews, final interviews will happen tomorrow. So hopefully, that'll be completed, and then meetings will begin again, the monthly meetings will begin again in March, actually, March 12th. We attended the We attended the Sacramento Metro Chamber. We work closely with them as we go to the cap-to-cap and do some regional efforts together. Also attended Congressman Gueramendi was in town and listened to the latest and greatest that is happening at the federal level. In particular, the question was about healthcare and pharmaceutical needs by, and cost for our aging community. Councilman Cardoza and I were at the Homeless Ad-Hoc, and in our conversation with the mayor from San Diego, they described a whole process of allowing for enforcement to occur. One of the main things that the mayor said, that in order for their city to be effective and able to do this, was that safety and security of a bed was needed to be provided in order for their city to be able to implement some additional potential consequences. But the infraction process and the process of that was progressive. It was not at one time, here you go, you're, you know, there was a lot of work to it, and San Diego has been taking this message across California and being pretty innovative in their own way. So it was nice to connect with him. Yesterday, attended our pinning and our fire department, which was an honor to be there with you, Chief, and the rest of the new firefighters, and so you did well for your presentations today. And so when, at the end of it, you could just, you know, how can I help you? I'll be like, oh, sure, okay. No, but thank you so much for joining our team and glad to have you here with us. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
And thank you. Busy couple of weeks. Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank our entire city team for all the work that they do and some of the executive directors in here that are here tonight that I've seen a lot of in the last two weeks. Mr. McIntyre, Slangely, Ben, I mean, it's, you guys have been hitting the ground running the last few weeks, and I just want to say thank you with everything you guys have been doing. And I know we still got to go back into closed session, so the night's not over, I'm going to make it quick. To our chiefs, please pass along to your men and women. I've seen how they protect our city and keep it safe. They are top-notch. They are professionals. My thank you, and keep up the good work, and I know they're in good hands with both of your leadership, so thank you very much. The last couple of weeks focused on really making the changes that the little subcommittees and such I've been on, one of which is the Development Impact Fees Ad-Hoc Committee that the Vice Mayor and myself are working on. It's going well. We've got a great group from not only the city, but also the private sector to really figure out how decisions we make, take it from development all the way to occupancy of the resident. So know that the time horizon on that is we are trying to figure out the things that are, as we call, the low-hanging fruit that we need to address to bring those back here in the next month or so. And then as we find other recommendations, we'll be bringing those back maybe over the summer, and then final ones, you know, after the traffic studies and such are done. But Yuba City is open for business, and we're trying to get that word out, and we're trying to be as business-friendly as possible. And Mr. Moody, thank you for everything you're doing, because, Ben, we've hit you with a lot of stuff, and you just took on the posts, so I thank you very much for everything you're doing. The other one is the Bookstore Master Plan Tax Agreement. Again, myself and the Vice Mayor is tackling that one. We've had meetings, it's going well. Hopefully, we can bring back good news here in a short amount of time, and that can go to LAFCO, and we can get that project moving. Last committee I've been assigned to that's met in the last two weeks is SASSA, and that's our animal services. And I was appointed the vice chair of that, and they do a great job, and I'm looking forward on representing the city and serving on that committee. So again, thank you to everyone in our city for the great job they do.
And thank you, Vice Mayor.
Workshop on the city's priorities and goals, and because I know that this is streamed, I want to make another comment that I made that night, because there was a report in the newspaper that this, this meeting may have been in advance of a sales tax or revenue measure. That clearly was not the intent of that meeting. That meeting was to begin, actually not begin, discuss the process of goals and priorities that this city council has adopted recently, and that adoption also included the city's staff and public several months before that. So I feel it's important to make sure that people don't, don't think that that was the precursor to some revenue measure. Never going to rule something like that out, but that is absolutely not the intent of those meetings. We did have the workshop on the Brown Act. Thank you to our city attorney, very efficient meeting. We have lots of boards and commissions that we have to, that, that, we have volunteers that give of their time, and it's important that when we're doing the city's business, we do so within the legal responsibilities of those boards and commissions. So thank you to City Manager Rocks for getting those scheduled and for Shannon for leading that effort. I did attend, along with other members of the council, the state of the Chamber. The Chamber of Commerce is really a going concern these days. You know, there's a real good vibe about what they're bringing to the community, and, you know, they've got some great events. Councilman Shaw talked about the Air Show. They're predicting 85,000 people may attend the Air Show this year. That's a lot of, lot of folks coming to our community, and hopefully we can reap some of the benefit through that, through hotels and restaurants, et cetera. As Councilman Shaw said, he and I are sitting on the Master Tax Exchange Agreement. Things are moving a little slower than I'm real comfortable with, but we're still plowing ahead. The county and the city are exchanging their financial information in regards to what's it going to cost each entity, the city and the county, to continue to provide the services, and that has to be, you know, it has to be shared equitably so that it's a win-win for both sides. I'm hoping that the pace will pick up a little bit as we move forward. Also, with the ad hoc on the Development Impact Fees, as Councilman Shaw mentioned, excellent group of public representatives along with the city staff and a private consultant who actually has a lot of, a lot of experience on the development side. So it's kind of a unique opportunity for us to pick his brain and his, he has another person that's with him. They're very good at what they do as far as understanding Development Impact Fees and what we can do to, as Councilman Shaw says, open the doors to business, because that really is a key to the economic sustainability of this city. We need to, we need housing, affordable housing. We need multifamily dwellings. We need residential, and we need commercial. And right now, we're kind of stuck in the mud, so we're working diligently to bring that forward. Did attend the swearing ceremony. Congratulations to the four firefighters that are now part of the Yuba City Fire Department, and especially to Chief Alexander. It's a great department. You're inheriting a dedicated and competent workforce who are very thrilled that you're here, and we're thrilled that you're here, so welcome. I do want to mention Chief Landon. A lot of what happens in the city goes very unnoticed, but he keeps us informed of what's going on. You know, every day they go out and they, like our fire department and like all city employees, they go out and work their tails off to protect us. Some of the stuff that's been going on in the city of Yuba City that our law enforcement folks are having to take care of is really high, high, high-risk stuff, and I hope that calms down a little bit. It's certainly not a reflection on law enforcement, it's just that things are happening, and as they are in every community, and I feel comfortable and confident when my head hits the pillow at night that we have very competent and professional public safety folks guarding my house. As Councilman Shaw said, the Sutter, I was going to get this wrong, so Brad, don't get upset, Sutter Animal Services Authority, I always want to call it something different, but, you know, these folks are taking care of the animals in our community, and, you know, that from time to time, we have issues, and there's a great volunteer staff that helps them, and, and, you know, again, there's another unsung hero in the, in the area taking care of a lot of stuff. Finally, I want to make the comment that, that this flavored tobacco and vaping thing that our council brought forward a couple of weeks ago has a lot of energy, and I just want to make sure that the public knows, not only those of you in the audience here, but those who watch via the web, et cetera, we will listen to everybody before we make any decisions. You know, there are a lot of impacts about whatever decision we make and whichever direction we go, but it is, it is something that we have a passion about in regards to taking care of our youth, and we have to explore all those avenues and opportunities for us to take, but we're also mindful of business as well. We've heard us say many times tonight even, we're going to be open for business. So it's, it's going to be a complex matter, but it will, will, it will be handled publicly, and we'll try to make the best decision we can. With that, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. So a lot of stuff going on last couple of weeks, and we continue to stay really busy. I too want to reiterate the fact that, you know, I really appreciate all of our executive staff. They work so hard, everybody works very hard at everything they do. Chief in particular, the emails you send out and the communication, just keeping an eye on, on, like, letting us know that your folks are keeping an eye on us, actually, and we really appreciate that. Stay busy helping across the river, too, it sounds like, but, but, but yeah, so I don't want to reiterate, there's several things that I was present at, but I will focus on my, my assignments. There was a few of them that I went to, first meetings for this year as a newly-employed ee to the SECOG Commercial Corridor Task Force, which is basically a group of us coming together as members of SECOG to focus on community revitalization. Ours is the Bridge Street Corridor. You've heard of Green Means Go and other pilot projects that happened throughout that area, and so we're focusing on business and economic development in the region, but our focus is Bridge Street Corridor. As, as the new bridge comes to, into fruition here, hopefully in July, getting widening on Bridge Street, there's a lot of opportunities there that we can hopefully leverage to develop a really completely, well, revitalized area through town. Of course, the whole point is to, for quality of life issues, and not to mention the fact that Bridge Street itself, the pavement needs some help. A lot of people come to talk about that. So that's, it's nice to be on that again, was the first, the meeting of the year and as a newly-employedee, so it was kind of an introductory thing. They do have, they've identified some barriers to development, and there's categories, infrastructure, regulatory processes, the cost, for example, land and what they call brownfield versus greenfield development, and then some social barriers. NIMBYism is an example of that, where it could be a barrier, and then, of course, the market itself. So there's a lot, and I have a chart here that I think I just decided I'm going to share with fellow council members. It was a pretty good, comprehensive chart, kind of summarizing everything that we've all know, but you kind of categorize it and helps you focus on hopefully some solutions. The main thing would be, of course, to get together and identify through folks and who, for development. You often hear folks talk about when they, when they try to open a business, for example, and they reach hurdle after hurdle after hurdle, or do a development in hurdle after hurdle after hurdle, and then someone else comes up and they, well, good luck with that, this is the problem. So I think it's important, we had this conversation briefly down there, that we identify these paths of least resistance to getting something completed, and rather than have everybody who comes in behind you reinvent the wheel, just take that to best practice and hardwire it in the process and make it the new normal, so the next guy doesn't have to deal with that. There's some room to make that happen, I think, and hopefully we can work on that. Through the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, I'll be in a video with their executive director along with a few other, I think, I believe the mayor of Marysville and one of the members of the Board of Supervisors from Sutter County, featuring basically marketing, Yuba-Sutter area specifically, of course, for me, would be Yuba City. Identify major attractions, placemaking efforts, a lot of the criteria for a slight site selector, folks who come out and try to, they consider relocating their businesses to an area, they want to go down the list of amenities and what makes, makes it work for them, and also to include act tourism. We haven't nailed down the specific topics, but we want to limit to about three for our area that we'll highlight there on that video. SECOG itself, we, the meeting consisted primarily of identifying $200 million that is up for grabs this year for this year's funding round, and we're in the process of having discussions to determine the allocation formula. There is different ones, what they do based on population, miles driven, and some stuff also has to be flat-out competitive, but we've identified some options for the, the allocation formula, again, because sometimes projects, we want to do Project A, but Project B looks better on paper. So we want to get the money, but this is our real priority, but in order to get something, at least something done, we might go to something that's not, not as high on the list if we had an opportunity to have some discretion, so that one of the allocation methods described would allow for that, to come over here to our priority. So thank you, Diana, for our discussions on that. I really appreciate that, your insight. There are many more criteria as well, or benefits to certain ways to do that. The League of California Cities, I am a newly-employedee to the Community Services Policy Committee, and that is not necessarily just amenities. Again, we had our first meeting recently down in Sacramento. Beyond amenities, we also talked about issues such as aging, youth services, and housing that we can discuss, bring everybody's opinions together, and hopefully develop some policy for the League of California Cities and their lobbying efforts. Oh, see, the one thing I want to mention, two things along the list that's already been repeated, but I do want to talk about the Sikh film event, or Sikh film event we had over there, thanks to partnership with Yuba-Sutter Arts Council. It was, it was a good event. I wish we would have had a little bit more attendance, however, it was very informative. I too learned something, and I think everybody, it's worth putting forth a little bit of effort to look into what exactly they do, what they stand for. It really is, it was quite interesting, and I appreciated the turnout and the folks that participated, and thank you, many, for being there. And also, of course, I can't just skip over there are badge-pinning, one of our brand-new four firefighters and our new chief. It was a proud moment to be there. It means a lot, very ceremonious, and the commitment and sacrifice and the hard work you, you, the fire department, all put every day is really appreciated and recognized. And like we talked about, Chief and Chief, and, you know, everybody, really, you all and your staff do so many things for our community and for society in general that, you know, we never know about. In fact, you might even know, not even know about it. They do things because it's the right thing to do, and they do it for the right reason. That's why we make such an effort to hire the right people, and boy, have we gotten lucky, and we've done a good job doing that, and we really appreciate them and everything you all do. So that, with that, I will conclude, and we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you very much all for coming.